Hello? Can anyone hear me?
Hi Candy, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Here comes Heather.
Okay, I will call the meeting to order. Welcome to our city council meeting. It is Thursday, February first, two thousand twenty-four. We're in trade and transit two, third floor. Please rise for the invocation by Councilman Vince Pelizzi, followed by the flag salute.
Lord, tonight we invite you to preside over this meeting. Even if we have different opinions, give us the unity of spirit. Help us to each listen politely as others share their points of view. Help us to work as a unified team in combining ideas for a great outcome. Help us to work as a whole rather than as individuals trying to promote our own agendas. May we have a spirit of camaraderie in this room. Let us work together in our shared mission. In your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move to item three approval of city council meeting minutes from January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four is their motion in a second.
So moved.
Second, motion in a second. Any comments or questions on the minutes? Here you can see none. Mrs. Frank on the motion for item three.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six zero. Item four, limited courtesy, the floor. We've had no requests tonight. We're going to jump around for one particular item. We're going to jump to miss to item ten, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution authorizing amendment to the agreement for legal services with city solicitor.
Is there a motion in a second? So move.
Second.
The second, Mayor Slaughter is joining us remotely for a scheduling conflict. Mayor, the floor is yours, sir.
Yes, good evening. Thank you, President Yoder, Vice President, by the members of council and administration. What you have before you for your review is a resolution authorizing an amendment to the agreement for legal services with the city solicitor. As we all know, Norm retired at the end of this past year. And therefore Austin from McCormick, Austin White has had to absorb his work until we are able to, you know, replace Norm and find a second solicitor's office to fill that void. And therefore, with the increase in workload, Austin and McCormick asked for a slight bump in their fees as they're filling in until we find a replacement. And that is what is before you tonight. Obviously, I'm on the phone. I'm assuming Austin is there. But if there are any questions for myself or Austin, obviously, we'd be happy to answer, and this was reviewed and financed.
Thank you, Mayor Slaughter. Ms. Mealy, finance. Anything to add from the conversation?
No, nothing in particular. I think of note our existing contract with McCormick is a was a contract with that allowed for up to five years' worth of extensions, and we're currently in year three of the contract. And the one thing that I that I wanted to be clear on at Tuesday's meeting, and I felt like we gained some level of clarity, was that if we had set rates within that contract that weren't supposed to be increased during the term length of the contract, then I was making the case that this would make me a bit uncomfortable, but it was somewhat of an open-ended contract, and I don't think this really, you know, that the it appeared that it would allow for for rate increases, so that seemed within the scope of it. Also, during the finance meeting the other, obviously, we currently find ourselves with only kind of one complete city solicitor due to the sort of surprise retirement of another. And the administration believes they're ready to go out with an RFP here. And Derek, was it about a week? That you thought?
Well, I'm going to get it to city councils to review probably within the next week or two. I'll send it to Austin and the city council to see if you all would like to add anything to it, and then we can get it out the door.
Right, so the hope would be sometime in the month of March, which would be, I believe, the kind of renewal date for year four of existing city solicitor contracts to have an RFP out for new solicitors. And obviously, our secondary hope would be, of course, that McCormick will respond to that RFP. Austin's like, but.
We missed you too, Austin.
Right, but that that we will be able to once again engage, you know, a second city solicitor. And I think the only other major item of discussion on this item in finance was that that Randy and I and I had the sense that that Derek also somewhat agreed would like to see the one of our city solicitors be someone from far enough outside the area that they wouldn't have as many conflict issues as most of our local legal firms do. Just because we are such a small municipality that oftentimes the law firms the cities worked with from within the city work for multiple other entities within the city, and when a legal issue arises can be conflicted out. But but yes, that is to say, the increase in rates, which I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Austin, but just brings us up to the same amounts that everyone that all the other municipalities are paying, correct?
Yeah, it brings you up to the same rate that we provide to the county.
Right.
So there, I mean, we have different rates for private pay.
Well, that's obvious.
These are our government discount rates, and this is, yeah, this is exactly the rate that the county gets.
Okay, so that seemed more than fair. And, you know, obviously, nobody should tell the county that we were paying less.
What are you talking about? Thank you, Ms. Mealy. Any comments or questions from other members on the amended agreement here? All right, here you can see none. Mrs. Frank on the motion for item ten.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six zero. We'll jump back up to item five, Mrs. Frank.
An ordinance ARPA transfer ordinance number twelve in final reading.
Is there a motion in a second? So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, Mr. Livermore. Let's you introduce it.
Good evening, members of council. Yeah, what I have before you is our ordinance number twelve. It is the final reading. What it is, we are moving money money from Public Works contingency, Public Works future projects into a contingency line item to purchase two dump trucks. Nothing's changed since the last meeting we had. Everything's still in order. Any questions?
Any comments or questions from members of council? I'm going to propose one amendment has nothing to do with yours. It's related to a request we've previously gotten for a development project in town, the Williamsport Lumber Yards Ball Field Project. We've been asked to help get it over the finish line in funding to the tune of one million dollars. We can use recipe plan money for that. We've individually, for the most part, have chatted about it. I think we're at a point where we're ready to do that. So I'm gonna propose an amendment to the ordinance to change the following line items and create the following line items. I'm going to propose to create under recreation a new project line item, Williamsport Lumber Yards, increase that funding level to one million dollars. I'm going to propose to reduce the working off my phone here, so just give me one second. I'm going to propose to reduce Ways Garden to zero, Low Spark Community Garden to zero, future projects to zero, contingency to zero in recreation, and I'm also going to propose to reduce Graffiti Run by two hundred and seventy-nine thousand three fifty-one. That evens that out. Is there a second to the motion?
Adam.
Yeah.
This is in final reading, and I would suggest that those types of changes, considering they're significant, would have to be done on a first reading of an ordinance.
Okay, I was just trying to be expedient. I know Derek has to go, so we can do it at the next one, so I'll withdraw that. We'll hit that in first reading. Sorry, I didn't think about that. Thank you, Austin. Any other comments or questions in final reading? I'll struggle through that again here in a minute. Okay, Mrs. Frank on the motion. I rescinded my my amended.
Well, what you could do, well.
It's all good. We'll do it.
You could, the options would be pass this as it is.
Yeah.
Or you, I mean, you could amend this and then have it first reading of that amended ordinance, but then that would.
I rescinded it. We'll pass this. We'll do the first reading of the next one. Sorry, yeah, it's all good. I appreciate that, though, Austin. Thank you. Mrs. Frank won the main motion for item five.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six zero. Scott, thank you very much. We'll move to item six. Sorry, I thought that was.
Ordinance amending transfer ordinance number ten in first reading.
Is there a motion in a second? So move.
Second.
Motion in a second, Scott. How about it?
Yeah, what you got before you is transfer ordinance number ten, which is being amended to reappropriating surplus to eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand three hundred ninety-seven. The last one we went through was incorrect. I talked to finance. We got it straightened out. These are the new numbers for the amended ordinance number ten.
All right, this did not go to a committee. Are there any questions on the proposed amending of transfer ordinance number ten, Ms. Mealy?
Just where did that extra three hundred thousand bucks come from?
We'll have to get back with you on that.
Okay, I guess we don't have anyone.
I don't know if she's on.
I don't think so. Heather's not on there, right, or Jamie?
Nothing is the the change for the two hundred.
Yeah, I understand. It's still the same amount of money.
The extra.
Um, I'm assuming there was just something else that we appropriated out of the surplus fund that we didn't account for.
Ms. Ms. Mealy, I believe I I review this, and my recollection is that it was an error in carrying a number, like the wrong number was brought on to the ordinance.
Ah, okay.
So it's it's really, I don't think it's actually, yeah, I guess, changing. It was just a somebody had the wrong number.
No, no, I I know that. I guess what I'm saying is, I'm assuming it was just a number that came over from the budget we approved in December. But I also didn't remember it being nine hundred thousand dollars of re-appropriated Act thirteen surplus in in our budget, which is why I was just trying to. And does anybody on council remember what what all we were taking out of Act thirteen this?
I don't.
This budget go around?
I don't.
Well, I can, I mean, it doesn't really, it it does not change, Scott, my willingness to say that we can take this from re-appropriated surplus if we have it in there. It just, it just makes me try to remember what it what else it was we were taking out of there. About three fifty in streets, right? Coming out of Act thirteen from last year's budget?
Yes, last year's budget is two hundred, and then we're adding this two hundred to get me to four hundred.
Okay, got it. Okay, all right, well, I'll I'll look back, or if you have a moment to to look into it, then just let me know. Okay, thanks.
Any other comments or questions on this? Okay, here you can see none. Mrs. Frank, item six in first reading.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six to zero. Scott, thank you. We'll move to item seven, Mrs. Frank.
An ordinance ARPA transfer ordinance number thirteen in first reading.
Is there a motion in a second? So move.
Second.
Motion in a second, Mr. Nar. Welcome you to the podium, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, President Yoder and members of council. What I present to you is a request from the Bureau of Codes. Is requesting an ARPA transfer ordinance number thirteen in order to purchase a new copier for the codes department. Basically, what has happened is is the copier that we have services nine employees for the codes department. The current one that we had is actually going to the scrap heap because it is nine years old. In October, we had it serviced, and at that service, we spoke with the service technician, and he advised us that we could probably get another year out of it. So therefore, we thought we would move that over into capital projects starting next year. However, it did not make it. So therefore, we are requesting, we did not have it in the budget this year, and we requesting that transfer.
Thank you, Mr. Nar. This one did go to finance. Ms. Mealy?
Yep, this went to finance, and while not an ideal situation, obviously, the codes department needs the copiers. We should probably move on this, and it does not affect the the overall ARPA budget outlook in in any meaningful way. You know, the only thing that I wanted to make sure of, and I think Randy agreed with me on this, was that we build in a copier with an eight-year lifespan into the into the capital projects budget, starting in twenty 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 twenty-five, I guess. To be sure that we do have that funding in place when this one kicks the bucket, perhaps sooner than the ten years that we were hoping to get out of it. But that was that was all.
Awesome. Any other comments or questions related to the item in front of specifically? I'll reintroduce that amendment here in a second, but any comments or questions for Gary? Miss, Mrs. Katz?
Gary, is there a record of the the vehicles for codes? Is there, you know, are any of the the vehicles close to being outdated that we're going to have to read?
No, they're, no, we the the four, we have four brand new ones. We have two older ones, and both of the two older ones are two thousand and eighteen, and they only have probably maybe ten fifteen thousand miles on them. So we, that was something that we were looking at within the next several years, probably to start putting that in there for the future as far as under the capital projects.
Good, because I want, if there was, if there was a need, this is the time to do it.
No, we're, we're, we're fine with them. What we have, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Gary? Okay, I'm going to reintroduce that amendment, so I'm going to make a motion to amend the proposed transfer ordinance in first reading by the following. I'm going to create a line item under recreation, Williamsport Lumber Yards funded for one million dollars. Reduce the following line items in recreation, Ways Garden to zero, Low Spark Community Garden to zero, future projects to zero, contingency to zero, as well as Public Works Graffiti Run, reduce that by two hundred and seventy-nine thousand three hundred fifty-one dollars. That balances everything out. Is there a second to that motion? Second, motion in a second. Any comments or questions on the proposed amendment? This is something we've been approached with for a little bit. We've all kind of individually had a number of conversations amongst each other with the the chamber who is leading the project and requesting the funding. Mr. Pink is here. If anybody has any questions on it, but I think this is a good project, a good use of some of the final capital we have. I'm excited to see it go. Mrs. Katz?
Since you're putting the Ways Gardens and the only gardens and so on back to zero, does this need, I don't, I didn't see this to go into the budget to find out where we budgeted.
Those, all of those are done. There's just remaining leftover money that wasn't spent, and so reducing the leftover to zero just simply takes out the surplus out of those.
I'm glad you're.
That's all that it does.
Because I think people will question. Okay, thank you.
So that's all that it does. Any other comments or questions? Mrs. Frank won the proposed amendment.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, proposed amendment passes six zero. We're back to the main motion. Any other final comments or questions? All right, Mrs. Frank on the main motion, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, main motion passes six zero. Thank you all. Jason, thank you for being here in case we had questions. Gary, thanks for bringing that forward as well. We will move to item eight.
Resolution awarding an agreement between the City Wayne Sport and Choice Carpet Cleaners.
Is there a motion in a second? So move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Scott, you are back.
Good evening, and what you have before you is a resolution awarding an agreement between the City Wayne Sport and Choice Carpet Cleaning. This is something we have done, we did in the past last year. This contract is a two-year contract. That is one of the differences. For the total cost of the two-year agreement is that's hundred thousand four hundred fifty-six for the two years, which is around fifty thousand two hundred twenty-eight. Last year's agreement was right around forty-five nine nine, which was one year. So there is an increase from last year, so this year's rate around forty-two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. This was approved by Austin. And is there any questions?
All right, this did not go to a committee. We do this every year. It did go up a little bit, but nothing out of the realm of feasibility in my mind, but any kind of comments or questions, Mrs. Katz?
In this contract, it states that all carpeting is supposed to be steam cleaned twice a year.
Twice a year, yep.
I don't think this has been done.
Yeah, it has. There's been some. We were just in the police station. We should have done it in Jan- December. The scheduling was difficult. I got them in in January. Yes, it has been, the flasher was a hiccup with that, trying to logistically trying to get it all done, but they are aware of it that this year, springtime and fall time, that it'll be done, yeah.
Because they haven't done it, you know that, because I know the city clerk's office hasn't been done.
Well.
I I think it would be a good idea. I mean, I would agree. I'm of the impression, at least with with Janice's office, that there's been a handful of things since there's been a changeover in staffing.
Right.
That haven't been been kept up with.
Yeah.
I mean, we we need a cleaner, clearly. I, whether it's you or or somebody in Public Works, I would just ask that we make sure that what's getting done or should be getting done actually is getting done. I I don't know. I don't know if there's something we should change in the contract to accommodate that. I mean, I trust you, Scott, to.
Well, and it says that.
But.
Like I said, you know, I, we were, I know I got financed in first floor of mayor's office. Obviously, that was missed per office.
Yeah.
I just got police, and I just got mine done last fall, but.
Yeah.
It's, 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 I'm aware of the situation.
Yeah.
You know, we'll obviously keep an eye on it.
Yeah, and from what I gather, it's fairly recent. I mean, I think there's been a new person here the past couple of months.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, maybe it's just a expectation gap. I don't know, but if you could at least just hone in on that, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, and I communicate with Choice on a, once every two weeks to make sure or see where they're at, what they're doing, to make sure everybody, and I, obviously, I'm not down here babysitting what they do, but I wait for the phone calls from Janice or anybody down at the mayor's office to let me know what's going on. But yeah, a little tighter ship this year.
I do have another question. Is it necessary to vacuum every day? Because that's in the contract. I mean, you have, Janice is in her office, Peg is in her office. Is anybody else in your office, Peg? With you? I don't think so. And then you have Kevin's.
I mean, obviously, if it's in the contract, then they need to be doing it. There are five days a week. We're three at the public works, but like you said, it it could be like we talked about, it could be the changeover in the staff and the miscommunication, what's supposed to be done.
I don't think it's necessary, though.
What?
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary.
I mean, they're there.
Backed every day.
I mean, it doesn't cost anymore. They're there.
Okay.
Right. Right, so, I mean, if, if it needs done, and that's what, and that's what I think I had a discussion with Janice about. I said, if you think it needs done, and they're not, if it doesn't, and they're doing it, or don't do it, you can say something to them, but just let me know, so I know what you're, what we're doing, so. But. I mean, like I said, it ain't gonna cost anymore if they're already there changing, doing the trash, because they're, like I said, these buildings are five days a week, so they're here every day.
I know, they're circulating all over. I was just wondering if there would be a, I know this sounds cheap, but a price bait break.
Right.
No, won't make any difference.
I don't know. I, I don't think so for pushing a sweep around, but I mean, I can look into it. I don't know if there would be or not.
I can see where Public Works Building would need it.
What's that?
I, I can see where Public Works Building would need it.
Our bills?
Yeah, your bill, your building, Public Works. A lot. But I mean, I'm talking these offices that are here. They really don't get that much traffic, so.
Right, right.
I mean, I don't vacuum every day. That's all.
Any other comments or questions on the item? Okay, hearing seen none, Mrs. Frank, on item eight, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six zero. We'll move to item nine.
Resolution authorizing the purchase of the twenty twenty-four Ford F-two-fifty LX pickup truck and a twenty twenty-four Ford pickup truck.
Is there a motion and a second? So move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Floor is yours again, Scott.
What you have before you is a resolution authorize two pickup trucks, one twenty-four F-two-fifty and one twenty-four F-three-fifty. Basically, this was approved through budget. We are using Stucky Ford, I believe, out of Altoona. The total cost is one hundred and twenty-three nine, or two ninety-six for both these vehicles. They are utility vehicles. They have utility boxes being put on them. This was approved by Austin and yeah, so any questions on the pickups?
This did not go to a committee. Any comments or questions from members? It's budgeted. We expected this when we approved the budget. Okay, hearing seen none, Mrs. Frank, on item nine.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six zero. Thank you, Scott. We will move to item eleven, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution purchase of network present penetration testing.
Is there a motion and a second? So move. Motion in a second. Mr. Black, good evening, sir.
Good evening, everyone. What you have here is a resolution for the purchase of a network penetration testing service. It's from a company called Wana High. Mr. Randall. Allison, you looked it up the other day. I forget exactly what it said, like pulled from the fire or something like that. But this is for a total of three years, first year being six thousand five hundred and twenty dollars and fifty cents, and years two and three at five thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars each year. This will be coming out of my contract and services.
This was reviewed in finance. Ms. Mealy?
This was reviewed in finance. Aside from Aunt Randy's intriguing revelation about the possible meeting of Wana High. There, there wasn't all that much discussion. I, I think Mrs. Katz actually probably led the discussion more than anyone, just asking some questions about. Well, we, we initially discussed sort of network penetration testing and what that might mean. And while Mr. Black was reluctant to say exactly what forms it might take, I asked some questions about whether or not that would include like attempts to spam city employees and things like that. But he didn't want to give away all the secrets. But anyway, the, you know, multiple different attempts to hack the city's website. And according to Mr. Black, this is not the only product that we have that is doing, that is coming out the city's website from one angle or another, correct?
Correct.
Right. In an effort to make sure that we're absolutely secure. I, I think Bonnie had just questions about the the various products that we have that are currently operational, the various software and or other contracts that we have, and to what extent they're complementary, or if any of them are duplicative. And Mr. Black seemed quite sure that we were, that none of these were duplicating services that shouldn't be duplicated, correct?
Correct.
Effectively, that all, that all of these are performing kind of necessary technological checks and or balances on our website to make certain, and our, and our city networks to make certain that they won't, that they're not vulnerable. We don't forward anything with a recommendation, but I think the discussion was generally relatively positive. This is a three-year contract unless we dramatically increase the number of pardon me, Mr. Black, was it users? I think you said we have a hundred computers on the network.
We're about a hundred and twenty now. This is good for up to two hundred.
That we shouldn't see any sort of cost increase over the three-year life of the contract. In future, of course, that is likely to change. And this is a service, Mr. Black, I have the impression that we will require indefinitely.
I'm sorry, again?
That I said, this is a service that I assume we would require indefinitely.
We would not require it indefinitely, but I would recommend an ongoing because new vulnerabilities are discovered every day. And they would test them to make sure that we're covered.
Yeah. And that, yeah, and the one thing that we didn't ask in finance that I guess we should is, how does this? Is there any end result of this making us more secure and consequently more insurable?
Yes.
Okay, for some, because it seems like
Very much so.
It'd make us more insurable.
When we can prove to the insurance company, yes, we get tested. We do the remediation, we're tested again, and it comes back clean, or something different is found and it's tested. And it's an ongoing thing, but yes, it will make a difference on cyber insurance.
Got it. And our remediation of any flaws found by the penetration testing, I'm assuming is happening in-house?
Yes.
That is to say, that's on you?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, yeah, that was everything that I had.
Thank you, Ms. Mealy. Are there any other comments or questions from other members? Here you can see none, Mrs. Frank, on item eleven, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six zero. Thank you, Mr. Black. I'm gonna propose that we do twelve and thirteen together, because they're both related for talking to Skip. And it just might make it a little bit more efficient, so. Make a motion, we visit items twelve and thirteen, both revolutions, resolutions related to fair sub-reseparate agreements between the county and the city. Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Skip, items twelve and thirteen together.
Good evening, President Yoder, members of council. Community and Economic Development is presenting two resolutions this evening for your consideration. There are agenda items twelve and thirteen, and they both relate to the fair program. The acronym refers to the Pennsylvania Housing Affordability and Rehabilitation Enhancement Funds to support the city's rental rehabilitation program. The original concept was for the program to be area-specific. But we are requesting that these resolu- that with these resolutions, that it become a citywide program. With the Lycoming County Fair Grant, we were able to help twenty-three applicants rehabilitate a total of fifty-six households. The majority, sixty-eight percent, of these households are considered very low income by HUD's definition. Below fifty percent of the area median household income. We have used four hundred eighty-one thousand one hundred and three dollars of the fair funds to revitalize many rental properties within the city. Yet there remains an issue with light. Previously, fair funds were targeted for the Brodard area, the acronym being BNEP, the Historic District, and Park Avenue. However, however, we recognize to ensure rental properties are up to standards and affordable, we need to continue with these initiatives. What you have in front of you are two amendments to our remaining fair funds, making it a citywide benefit to assist more households. With this update, we are also hoping to overcome past challenges related to the lack of applicants, as more households will meet the eligibility requirement. Our goal is to expend these funds within the next year and then apply for additional funding from the county in twenty twenty-five. Renee Drummond and other members of our team, along with the county staff, were instrumental in bringing forth this concept to assist with improving the rental housing within the city while maintaining its affordability for our residents. These agreements have been approved by the county commissioners and have been reviewed by Austin White. I will try to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Skip. Are there any questions related to either of these resolutions? These did not go before committee, but open the floor to others. Ms. Mealy?
How much funding will this leave in total then, Skip, for a citywide rental rehab pool?
Right now, we will have available two hundred ninety-five thousand four hundred and seventy dollars.
Between the two.
Between the two, yes.
Okay. And by transitioning that funding out of the original grant pools that it was intended for, are we changing the income limits in any way?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so have we met the thirty percent income threshold on both? So now we just have to meet, is it two hundred percent?
I believe you're right. Somewhere, it's around two hundred. I'm not sure. It might be a little bit lower, but it's in that neighborhood.
Okay, so all this rental rehab funding then is available theoretically to anyone making two hundred percent of the AMI.
And in anticipation of this, just to give you an idea, we actually have four applicants in the queue ready to go to utilize these funds once they become citywide.
Okay, got it.
Any other comments or questions from members? Okay, here you can see none. This is Frank on the motion for items twelve and thirteen.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six zero. Skip, thank you very.
Thank you.
We'll move to item fourteen, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution letter of engagement for Eastburn and Gray PC.
Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Welcome our treasurer, Kevin Mackey, to the podium. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. So our tax solicitor Jenny Brown has switched to a different company, and much like the ones before us, we needed another resolution authorizing myself to continue working with her. Jenny has been a very gracious help to me throughout the past two years here. And I cannot speak very hot, any more highly of her than our past rates have been as far as our increases in tax revenue. She has played a hand in that, and she has been very helpful in advising me on certain things. So her rates have gone up a little bit. She's at three hundred dollars an hour, and her paralegals are at one seventy-five. But again, we use her when we need her. And her help has always been well warranted.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey. What were, what were her rates prior? Do you remember?
I, I don't. It was, it was put out under Nick.
Yeah.
But it was again about three or four years ago, so things have gone up in that, that period.
Yeah. Any comments or questions from members? Okay, here you can see none. This is Frank on item fourteen.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six zero. Move to item fifteen.
Resolution Tax Collection Committee Delegate Appointments.
Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, Mr. Mackey.
This one is authorizing myself, Heather Jacoby, and Jamie Livmore to act as both the delegate and for myself, the alternate for Heather, and then the second alternate for Jamie to represent the City Williamsport, I think Lycoming County Tax Collection Committee. Previously, we had a WASD representative as our second alternate, who I think has been utilizing our percentage of the vote over there. So I just want to make sure we all have city representatives that can take up that for us.
Very cool. Any comments or questions from members? This also did not go to a committee. Ms. Mealy?
Well, it kind of came to finance. Kevin brought it up under.
Okay.
Which is when Randy and I learned that we were apparently on this committee, much to our surprise.
Voluntold, never told, right?
So, anyway, we were pleased to hear that, that someone with a a bit more apparently knowledge and or investment in the matters of the committee planned to attend the meeting. That was all.
Very cool. Any other comments or questions on this from other members? All right, hearing seen none. Mrs. Frank on item.
Council President Yoder, there is a correction, a typo that just, I think you just need to recognize. I don't think it requires an amendment.
Okay.
Under number two, first alternate voting delegate, Heather, it says Heather Jacob. It's, there's a Y that's missing, Heather Jacoby.
Okay.
Just for the record.
So.
And we'll make the correction.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for catching that.
Think peg.
Awesome. Other comments or questions? Mrs. Frank will be motion for item fifteen.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to item sixteen.
Resolution authorizing grant of right-of-way agreement for PPNL and utilities from city.
Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Motion in a second, Mr. Nar, welcome back.
Yes, good evening again, President Yoder and members of council. What this request is a right-of-way agreement with PPNL Electric Utilities in order to place an electrical and communication facilities along the property which is owned by the city at the Kafka Fire Training Grounds. Basically, Kafka came to us and they'd like to have a little bit more electrical power, which will enhance their training abilities up there. This was reviewed by Austin, and this just gives them right-of-way agreement to put the electricity up there more make it more viable for training up there for the fire training station, and that's behind the recycle center.
Excellent. This was reviewed in Public Works, Mrs. Katz?
Yes, it was. And the electricity is needed for the work that they need to do for training and things like that.
Enhance their training ability up there.
And it's something that has to be done.
Absolutely. Mrs. Ms. Mealy, sorry.
Are we gonna, help me understand, I'm a little unclear from the drawing, where exactly this line's gonna run? Are we gonna, are we gonna lose a lot of trees in that general vicinity, or what?
No, what it does is that actually that, that area that they're locating it at is, is just south of the towers that they have. What they're saying is, is that they need to trim the trees, that type of thing, in the future when they run, when they run the equipment up through there. It gives them that ability to do that.
Got it, but we're not like deforesting, not whole.
No, we're not, we're not clear-cutting that.
Got it. Okay, the only other comment I would make is PPNL's grant right-of-way agreement seriously still says no all men by these presents. The very first line. This is fascinating to me. I would have thought that all that line would have disappeared from. Okay. Sorry. I read it and was like, is somebody like scamming us? Anyway, okay, but yeah, so but they will be doing then trimming, presumably not dramatically more trimming in that area than they're already doing. I think they already have some, some voltage lines running through there, right? Okay, thanks, Gary.
Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing seen none. Mrs. Frank will be motion for item sixteen.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six zero. Item seventeen, except for filing with the Veterans Memorial Park Commission minutes from November sixth, two thousand twenty-three, Public Works from March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, I presume. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Any comments or questions on the meeting minutes? Hearing seen none, Mrs. Frank, on the motion for item seventeen.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six zero. Item eighteen, announcements. Our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will Item eighteen announcements, our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be here on Thursday, February fifteenth, two weeks at seven P M. Um, there will be a police pension board meeting following the city council meeting. We might take a couple of minutes to grab a drink quick. Um, but that will be following this. Um, upcoming meetings, Monday, February fifth, twelfth P M, planning commission. Um, Tuesday, February thirteenth, eleven thirty A M, public safety, one P M, finance, two thirty P M, public works. Wednesday, February fourteenth, nine A M, economic revitalization, Thursday, February fifteenth, ten thirty A M zoning hearing board. Seven P M, city council meeting. Um. Any comments from any members of council? Um, I, I saw there was a announcement, I think it was last week, two weeks ago, I forget when it was Jason, um, Jackass Brewing. Coming into town, um, really exciting to see um, a continually growing industry. Um, especially right here in our backyard, uh, welcome them, glad to see them make an investment here. Um. Excited to have some beers. Any other comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the administration? Any comments from the public? And nobody from the news media is here. I'll take a motion in a second for adjournment, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, uh, give us a couple of minutes, we can do police pension quick. I think they're online. Uh, Chris, I forgot to connect with you, sorry. Yes. All right, I will call the uh, police pension board meeting to order. Our, uh, so we have three agenda items. Our first item, approval of the minutes from December seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Motion in a second to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Tag it. Motion in a second. Um, any comments or questions on the minutes? Hearing seen none, Mrs. Frank on the motion for approval of minutes.
Mister Allison.
Yes.
Mister Mackey.
Yes.
Mister Pelosi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy. Mister Yoder.
Yes, um, motion passes six zero. Uh, item two is an accrual assumption letter to decrease the police pension rate. Uh, Mockenhop, um, and Heather are online to kind of walk us through this. Um, but they are essentially recommending that we reduce it. Um, there was a letter included in everybody's packet to kind of go through. Um, so I will turn it over to Heather. Um, and our team at Mockenhop to kind of walk us through this, um, and we can kind of figure out what we want to do. Heather, um, hope you can hear us. The floor is yours.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me?
Hmm.
Okay, uh, we received uh, the letter that's in your packet from Mockenhop. Uh, the assumption is to uh, lower the interest rate from seven percent. Uh, to six point seven five percent per year. Uh, we have Sue Trout and Dave Stipson from Mockenhop. Uh, available to speak with you with any questions you might have.
Um. On the surface, does anybody have any kind of questions? Um. Ms. Mealy, your thought in your head. I, I was gonna say we can also open the floor for Mockenhop, just kind of give us a high level. Our, our team at Mockenhop, if you'd be so kind, can you just kind of walk us through the letter, um, and, and why? Um, you're recommending this change?
Sure. Uh, so we uh, review the assumptions. Uh, you have actual evaluations, reports that are due every two years. So we review the assumptions every time and uh. Part of the interest rate assumption is the expected long-term rate of return on planned assets. Uh, as to assess that, we do a survey of investment managers to get their capital market assumptions. Uh, their long-term capital market assumptions to try and assess where that is and uh, when we got the results of the survey. Uh, they were expecting something significantly lower, um, somewhere around six point two six. Uh, percent uh, per year. I, I don't, I try and stay within fifty basis points of the. Survey average, so I'm recommending lowering the interest rate from seven percent to six point seven five. Um, percent long-term, so hopefully that'll, you know, when you have a. A more accurate assumption, it takes away, it should uh, more conservative assumption should. Improve the outcomes in the future, uh, have a lower benchmark to hit. Going forward.
Um, what are our assumptions in the uh, O N E and fire?
Sure. Uh, for the interest rate assumption, in the O N E plan, uh, it's. We're making the same recommendation, lowering from seven percent to six point seven five percent. So we made the same recommendation there. The fire plan is already at six point seven five percent. Uh, so we were making no assumption change recommendations for that plan.
Understood. And if I'm understanding your letter correctly, um, it's not likely to impact our twenty twenty-three. Uh. Sorry, sometimes I get a little confused when we're dealing with pensions in which year specifically. Um, are we likely to have to increase our twenty twenty-four MMO? As a part of this assumption change?
Uh, your twenty twenty-four MMO is already set and will not change. Uh, so the, the valuation that.
Will potentially impact twenty twenty-five.
It wi- it will impact your twenty twenty-five MMO.
Okay.
How so?
It'll increase it.
Yeah.
It, it will increase it and.
Basically what we're doing is assuming we're gonna make less money on the pension. Consequently, we have to increase our contribution to achieve the same goals.
Yeah.
Um, sorry, sorry.
Yes.
I'm not just explaining it for you. I'm just saying, just in general, so everybody understands who happens to be listening, like, yeah. But that's not a bad thing. I mean, obviously, we don't want to miss our benchmarks with the pensions, correct? So we want to decrease our assumption if that's what it looks like the market is going to do.
Yeah.
I guess my larger concern is if you're telling me the actual market expectation is more like six point two five percent. Then shouldn't we be decreasing our assumptions more than a quarter of a percent?
Um, well, that, that's the midpoint, you know. We, we conducted a survey, I think we had thirteen responses and they were all over the board and the, the average was. You know, somewhere, I think it was six point two six for the police. Um. So I wanted to stay within fifty basis points of that because it's not. Uh. It's not a precise calculation, it's not, well, it's a precise calculation, but it is estimates of future occurrences. That are going to be wrong, we just don't know in which way. So, you know, I, I think if you're within fifty basis points of that. Then you're within a reasonable range. Uh, so my recommendation was to go to six point seven five. And knowing that, you know, there is a cost here, but I, I will point out. We use an actuarial value of assets um, in, in the valuation, which just means. Instead of using the market value of assets, we s- we s- uh, phase in investment gains and losses over a four-year period.
Hmm.
So we're only recognizing in the one-one-twenty-three valuation seventy-five percent of the investment loss from twenty twenty-two. But we also had deferred investment gains uh, from the earlier years that are being recognized. So you should see, uh, while you will see in investment gains in these valuations. That will partially offset the cost of lowering the interest rate. Uh, so it is, from a timing standpoint, it does work out fairly well.
Hmm, got it. But it sounds as though what you're predicting that is a general economic downtrend. Um, over the coming years. What predicted by the survey that you conducted?
The long-term, things aren't gonna be as good as they have been in the past. Yeah, yeah. You know, over the last twenty years, the plans have returned about seven percent per year. But expectations for the next twenty years are lower than that.
Got it. Um. And the, so it sounds as though you're saying, when you say could offset a significant portion. Of the projected cost of lowering the interest rate, um, what, what is the? What is the potent- potential long-term annual cost of lowering the interest rate assumption?
Sure, um, we haven't run the, the numbers as of one-one-twenty-three yet, but um. I, I don't know if you have a copy of the twenty-one valuation handy, I can talk through it.
Sorry.
Um, uh, on page twenty-one of the valuation. There's a sensitivity analysis that just shows what the impact of a one hundred basis point change in the interest rate would have been.
Hmm.
So lowering the interest rate from seven percent to six percent at one-one-twenty-one. Would have increased the MMO eight hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars.
And that's just the police MMO, correct?
Right. Now, you know, it's not a linear calculation, but rule of thumb, you know. Lowering it twenty-five basis points might increase your MMO two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Now, the.
And that even with increased twenty twenty-three valuation?
Well, it's, it's going to be different, probably a little bit bigger than that because your liabilities will be a little bit bigger with the time value of money and the, the growth in the plan. Um, but um, to get to that, to some of those mitigating factors. The investment gain for the police valuation, we haven't run the li- liabilities yet, but we did. Balance your assets when we sent you your Gatsby reports for accounting. And. There's gonna be about a one point three million investment dollar, one point three million dollar investment gain recognized. Uh, rule of thumb is that hits your MMO about ten percent of that a year. Uh, so the investment gain by itself would lower your MMOs about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the police plan. Um, so that's offsetting.
And that's for the two years, correct, until the next valuation? Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, I'm just trying to keep it straight in mind.
Well, it's, it's a one-time.
Gain.
Gain of one point three million.
Right.
That, you know, impacts your MMO about ten percent, so like that one point three million, one, one-time gain. You know, lowers your annual cost about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year. Uh. So.
That's until we do the next valuation.
Right.
Correct.
Right.
Which happens biannually.
Yes.
Okay.
And there was one other point that I wanted to.
I'm sorry.
You know, a piece of news that you might be.
Yeah.
Fine, good. Also in the one-one-twenty-three valuation, on page thirteen. Uh, we show uh, the amortization schedule. So your MMOs, it's your normal cost, which is the cost of accruing benefits for your current active members. Uh. An estimate of administrative expenses, you subtract out your employee contributions. And then because the plan is. Uh, the police pension plan's about eighty-five percent funded. There's an amortization payment to get that back to a hundred percent funded. And that amortization payment, every valuation we add new bases to it. And uh, for the twenty twenty-five MMO. There are about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of amortization bases that are coming out of the calculation. Um. So. So that's, your MMO is going to go down regardless of the valuation, regardless of anything in the valuation, about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Just for the change in the amortization. It, because of an old expiring amortization base.
So what you're telling me at this point is that even if we reduce our assumption by point two five percent. We're likely to actually see a drop in our MMO of about ninety thousand dollars?
Um, based on those three factors, the, the one factor that we ha- haven't run yet is what the liabilities are. Uh, you're gonna have, you know, you know, we look at the census. Um, you look at mortality, salary increases, uh, turnover. Um, there's gonna be some kind of liability component that I. Until we run the numbers, we won't know what that is, but yes, um.
And that was, is likely to last until the next valuation.
Right, and then we'll.
And then, right, and then obviously that will change.
Yes, but so right now we can't say whether it's gonna be a good news or bad news valuation, but it looks. It looks good based on the pieces that we know. There, there are.
Twenty-one-one-twenty-five, that is.
Well, one-one-twenty-three valuation, yes.
Ah, okay, okay, got it. Um.
That impacts the twenty twenty-five MMO.
Right, right. Um, sorry, I thought you were looking forward to the one-one-twenty-five valuation, which I assume is not going to be so pretty, um. Uh, then, so I guess, and we cannot, we couldn't say do a six point seven percent valuation instead of a six point seven five? I know, I know what your recommendation is, I'm trying to cover our butts.
You could, um, I have, I have in most, most pension actuaries have stuck, stuck to twenty-five basis point intervals, but that's just the rounding that we use, um. You know, I'm aware of at least one plan that does it in ten basis point intervals, um, but yeah.
Okay, I guess all I'm saying is if we're likely to potentially see a savings on the MMO next year, even if we decrease the basis by point two five uh, percent, it would seem to me like this might be a smart time to decrease our assumption by slightly more. Um, in order to lessen the potential impact of low market returns moving forward.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I just remember having a huge fight over dropping fire to six point seven five from seven. Um, as largely because of the cost of that move, and when we have an opportunity to have a cost neutral adjustment, at least for the moment. Um, and, and bring ourselves more in line with predictions for the market, it seems to me like that might be wise. Um, but, uh, but I, um, I, you know, I'm, I'm only one voice on that one, so what do you guys think?
No, I, I mean, I, I, if it's not an issue on, um, Mock and Hop's end, I mean, I, I'm not opposed to that either, I mean, like, cause at the end of the day, I mean, our, our pensions are in really good shape and, and it's because of this, but it's because we more often than not are able to have intelligent, good conversations and good foresight, even though it might, the risk is there of inviting us in a couple of years, um. Yeah, so I, I'm, I'm okay with that, too.
Okay, um, if, I, I, I assume that not doing it by quarters of a, uh, percentage point makes the math more complicated on your end?
Not really, I just have to put in a different number into our programs to, to run things.
Okay.
And, and I, I do want to say, I gave you the good news about the one point three million dollar investment gain that you're going to see in this valuation. Um, because we are deferring seventy-five percent of the investment loss from twenty twenty-two. Um, so that there, there will be
A hit a couple of years down.
Yeah, uh, there's about five million dollars worth of deferred investment losses. Uh, to be recognized in either the twenty twenty, most of it in twenty twenty-five valuation, a little bit of it in the twenty twenty-seven valuation.
And is that an across-the-board loss shared by other municipalities in the state of Pennsylvania?
Most plans, almost every, everybody, you know, that's the market return, I mean, twenty twenty-two was a really lousy investment year. All our clients are in the same boat, uh, you know, you're not sticking out. Really, you're not an outlier one way or the other, um. Uh, everybody's
No, I understand, I guess what I'm trying to gauge is the likelihood of potential additional assistance coming from the state or something like that, if there was a bad year resulting in a bad valuation for municipalities across the state. Obviously, if it's our loss, there, there's, there, there would never be any increased assistance, but if it's a statewide loss, then there's a chance that the MMO contribution will increase, um. So, anyway.
Please, you would like to see this go down to six twenty point twenty-five?
No, 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 no.
Six point seven.
That would kill us. That'd be, that'd be, yeah, that'd be an additional five hundred thousand.
That's five hun- that's five hundred basis points, yeah, no, sorry.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm talking about taking it from six point seven, uh, six point seven five to six point seven.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I mean, which is a really, really tiny assumption drop, but at least brings us co- closer to the six point two six that they're, that they're, that they believe might be the return.
Yep.
Um, I guess my concern is that if we are so substantially above the rate of return in twenty twenty-five, in addition to showing a five million dollar plan loss, um. Then we're likely to have to take larger corrective action against our assumption, and it might, in the long run, be a harder hit in a couple of years out, am I inaccurate? When I say that?
No, you're not inaccurate, um. Yeah, a- and that five million dollar deferred losses, I, I haven't seen your assets yet, but I know twenty twenty-three was a good investment year in general for the markets. So, you know, that's why we smooth assets. If you had a copy of the twenty twenty-one valuation, I would point you to page twenty, uh, it just shows a graph of the market.
And I apologize for not having a copy of the twenty-one valuation.
It, it's just, you know.
I've got a computer, I, I probably have somewhere in my email, let me look.
Now, it just, uh, you know, highlights that smoothing assets, it's not a magic bullet or anything, but it does kind of smooth out your costs and that, you know, phasing in investment gains and losses over a four-year period generally works.
I mean, I think, y- yeah, the, the, a, a smoothing mechanism of some sort or another makes sense with city finances especially. Otherwise, we all get worked up every time the market takes a dive or, or, or jumps like crazy and, and, and you know, city financials have never operated that way and, and I, we can't take that kind of stress. And we, and we don't have the, the ability to, to flex out large sums of money on a, on a dime to try and make some sort of transition, so I, I from the limited understanding that I have of, of the, um, of, of that approach would indicate to me that it obviously makes sense, but um, you're saying that when we smooth twenty twenty-three into twenty twenty-two, it may possibly also have a positive impact?
Well, it'll have a positive impact, you know, it's, twenty twenty-three wasn't as good as twenty twenty-two was bad, but it does, it was good, so it will you know, that five million dollars of deferred losses will add some gains into it to offset that.
So, probably you're also thinking to yourself, if she should show up to the pension quarterly meetings, huh?
I think we're all thinking that. Appreciate you, Liz.
Uh, sorry for the, sorry, sorry, sorry for making you go over all of this crap with us.
No. Don't be sorry, I, that, uh, this, this is, I mean, this, this is, I, this is what it's gonna end up looking like, so this is, this is good conversation, so, no, don't be sorry at all.
So, so we're at me, I don't suppose that we can make this adjustment now, I would say that we should lower the assumption slightly more even than you're recommending, um, but what does that process look like, another police pension board meeting?
I would just simply say, I think if everybody's in agreement, I think we can make a motion to accept an amended recommendation of six point seven. If we vote on that, and Austin, tell me if I'm wrong here, um, if we vote on that, they can send an updated letter, I can check the box and sign it and send it back. So, Austin, is that okay?
That works for me, I don't, it's
Yeah, a- all it is is a letter, I have to check that we accept an assumption. Um, and so I, in, in my mind, I think if we vote on accepting the, an amended assumption as we've discussed, if they update that letter, I can just execute it. Yep, yeah, yep, so uh, any, any other questions, was, was anything to add, I don't want to
No, I don't have, I mean, sorry if I'm making the wrong call here, guys, but that just seems to me like better logic and we can
No, I
God forbid, returns are great, we can always put those fives.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Back in, so, okay.
I, I, I'm in agreement.
Yeah, okay.
I'm in agreement, so.
Okay.
Any, any issues, okay? So I'll make a motion to accept an amended, uh, recommendation to, um, move it to six point seven.
Second that motion.
Motion in a second. Um, any comments or questions? Mrs. Frank on the motion?
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six zero, um. That's it, cool, um, i- if you will, if, if you send an updated letter to Heather, um, she gets this to Janice, I can sign it, we'll get it sent back to you.
We'll get that out tomorrow.
Awesome, thank you, um, item three.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, item three, any related items, I don't think there is any. Um, motion in a second for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, please pension is adjourned, thank you all.
Thank you.